All right, thank you, everybody. Welcome to the April 8th Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. I have a hunch that a lot of the crowd here is here for our fourth item. I ask for your patience as we work our way through it. We have a little bit of a required order. We'll get through the next piece pretty quickly, but we will get to this in due time. All right, thank you. Next item is the acceptance of minutes. You folks should have a number of long list of minutes that came in. Any comments or thoughts before we move to approve? All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of October 8th, 2024, November 19th, 2024, December 10th, 2024, January 14th, 2025, and March 11th, 2025.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, unanimous. All right, let's continue with 922 Dale Street. Mr. Gonzalez? Oh, Dr. Gonzalez, sorry.
My name's Arthur Gonzalez, and I've received permission from the homeowner, Joe McCarthy, regarding the division of 922 Dale Street. First of all, thank the board for the committee for the permission and for the privilege to come back here with the continuance to make the adjustments necessary. Specifically, we have voided out any asking for a variance regarding the housing and the setbacks, and we've put the house to be completely within the required setback. So this specific meeting today is regarding a variance for the wetlands, which we had 5.3 acres to begin with, was divided into two lots. The existing lots with the old Fime House, which is 3.3 acres and has the necessary amount of dry land at over 75%, but the second lot, which would be the lot that I'm purchasing, which is 2 acres, has only 71% of the required dry land to put a house on it. And that's due to the fact that there's the 100-foot setback, and there's a creek and stream in the back that took a lot of the space that we have. The specific place for the house and that portion of the lot where it would go is on very high ground and quite a distance from the area of wetland, and we believe would not impact things. And so we're asking the board for a variance for that 3-plus percent that we're short.
Before we continue further, I just want to make you aware of a technical matter. So unfortunately, because of a series of events, we have four eligible voting members here today. So Mr. Testa was not here at the last meeting and is not caught up. So you would have the four of us. And what that means is because a supermajority must approve this item, you would need all four votes. And so there's sort of a couple different options for how we can proceed. So one would be to say if you just wanted to continue to next month, that would be understandable, and I would apologize to you for that if that was the way you wanted to go, but that is an option. Second option is that we can discuss these changes and any other comments that people have, and at that point, then you could decide if you want to continue then or if you want to proceed to a vote then.
I'll do the second.
I think that makes the most sense, but I just wanted to make sure that you-
Thank you.
-had the full choice. All right, so you can continue if you have anything else you wanted to mention, or I can move to questions.
Move to discuss.
Okay, yeah. Do you guys have any questions for Dr. Gonzalez?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate that they made the few alterations to bring back that 2.7 that they were looking for. I think when it comes to CBA, you're kind of stuck where you are, no matter what you do, so.
Just to clarify, because it's so far from the wetlands, you don't actually have to go through conservation to do any of the construction, correct?
That's when that, if it was approved, nothing on the property would be in the range of where conservation-
It's well outside the 100-foot buffer.
Okay. Feels better than nothing.
Was there any additional thoughts on your end?
No, I echo the appreciation to come back before us. That's the time and effort and cost as well, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and I, you know, I feel like we, like the last meeting, I think the consensus was that we were mostly okay with the continuous buildable area, and the sticking point was the variance on it, and that has now been resolved, so. All right, is there any comment from the public for 922 Dale Street? All right. All right, so any last bits before I give him the choice of where to proceed? Everyone feeling like they've covered everything they want?
Yes.
And I will just not read that second question.
Exactly, we will just not read the second paragraph. That will not be part of this, and we'll just read the first piece. All right, so now you do have your choice.
I agree to the vote.
All right, then let's, do we have a motion? Yep.
I move to approve the variant pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws Section 195-7.1A, contiguous buildable area in R1 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a single-family house on a vacant lot contingent upon the planning board's approval subdividing the two lots, lot into two parcels. Specifically, applicant is requesting CBA needing a relief variance of 3,457 square feet. The CBA proposed is 61,883 square feet or 71% of the total lot area, and the CBA required is 65,340 square feet or 75% of the total lot area, referencing plan from GPI Engineering Design Planning Firm on January 20th, 2025.
All right, do I have a second?
Hold on, can you just specify more? Because the first one has the same date.
Oh, and then general revisions on February, I don't know, yeah, February 4th, 2025. Is that true?
March 24th, 2025.
Where are we looking?
CBA comments.
Okay, so it goes up and back in time?
Yes.
On March 24th, 2025.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. Craig Coleman?
Aye.
Ms. Rutherford?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Congratulations, sir. Sir, you've got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we have the full show.
It's fine.
But yes, you're right. Yes, sure. All right, on to 45 Third Street. Would you be willing to read that one in?
I will. Notice hereby given that the Town of North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town of North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 at 7:30 p.m. to all parties interested in the petition of Prime Builders LLC Ryan Grasso for property at 45 Third Street, MAP 20 Parcel 3, North Andover, Mass., 01845 in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to the Town of North Andover zoning bylaws Section 195-4.3.3, the conversion of an existing dwelling to accommodate not more than five residential units by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with Section 195-10.7 of this bylaw subsection and four of this section. Specifically, applicant is requesting to build an addition for two housing units in conversion of an existing single-family dwelling for a total of three residential units. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8 to 1, and Friday from the hours of 8 to 11:30 by the Board of Appeals, Michael S. List, Chair. To you, S.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Sorry.
All right, thank you. Would you folks please introduce yourselves?
Sure, Brian Vaughn from Smolik &amp; Vaughn on behalf of the applicant, and with me tonight is Ryan Grasso, who's the principal and owner of the LLC that owns the property, Prime Builders.
All right, thank you. And can you walk us through what you're doing, you're proposing here?
Sure. Ryan purchased the property. It's currently approved by a large, single-family home. It's a, it's a very large lot for the neighborhood. You can see from the memo, I believe it's 12,500 square feet lot size requirement, and we're upside of 20,000 square feet. We are proposing to add two additional dwelling units to convert into multifamily housing, which is permitted in the district subject to a special permit. You can have one to five residential dwelling units. We actually believe that the lot could perhaps, you know, accommodate more than three units, but, you know, it's kind of interesting because there's a lot of space to work with, and there's different ways that it could be designed. What the architect chose to do was to try to mimic almost a three-single-family appearance on what would be consistent with lot sizes in the neighborhood of three single-family lots. We had considered possibly aggregating the units closer to the existing structure, in which case it may not have been as large, but I think Ryan was hoping to try to mimic what, you know, we're in the area where the lots kind of convert from the single-family towards the library into the much, you know, denser multifamily uses as you get away from that and towards Maple and Second Street.
If I might ask a technical question here, maybe it's actually best answered by Mr. Hutchins, but I feel like it'll help set the table for the discussion. The special permit listing on the, in here says not more than five units, but obviously we have a specific plan that we are approving. So if we approve this, they would not be able to build five units. They would only be able to build the three that are proposed here. Right, okay. I just want to make sure that that is, that we understand that, and for the audience as well, because I know that we have received a number of letters, and one of the things in there, in some of those letters, was that this was five units, and I just want to make clear this is three.
It's three, and it's in-
Can you just explain that again, because I mean, I heard it was going to be three, then I heard it was five.
Okay, so we'll have a chance for public comment later, and we can have a little bit more back and forth, but just to reiterate, it's that the zoning allows for a special permit to permit up to five units, that you can get a permit for up to five units. But when you get a special permit, it's for a particular case. And so this particular plan has been proposed, which has three units in it. And so if we approve the special permit, they will not be able to build anything different than what is proposed in this plan. If they were to build something else, they would have to come back to us. So just want to make clear so that everybody understands that.
They could build something smaller.
They could build something that fits within the footprint and that has as many units or fewer, but they could not do anything else.
Right.
All right, thank you, continue. Apologies for sidetracking it for a moment.
And I think the one other thing that's worth noting is, you know, we've really tried to accommodate more than enough parking for what we're proposing. I think we've accommodated 10 off-street parking spaces between garages and driveways, where I think we would only need six pursuant to zoning.
Okay.
Anything you wanted to add, Ryan?
No, I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, zoning, you know, may, under special permit, may have permitted five, but we thought that was obnoxious as well for the neighborhood. We wanted something that, you know, kind of blended with the neighborhood, keeping with the character and the integrity of the existing building and the surrounding buildings. So we thought that three was certainly more palatable and inappropriate, you know, for the area.
And you're not asking for any other variances, no setbacks, height, anything like that?
No. But for the three family, it actually would be a by right building that we could, you know, hypothetically, if you wanted to make that into a single-family that large, we could just build it with no relief.
Is there a question why the driveways for the second and third unit aren't on the plan? I'm seeing them on these, I'm not seeing them here.
Unless it was an oversight, but no, we had one curb cut going to Dudley for that rear unit, and then two curb cuts for going to first street.
Unless you want to look to make sure that this is the proper map, this is what was provided to us, and it doesn't have any driveway-
It does not show the curb cuts.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It only shows the existing driveway.
So that would be something that would have to be corrected.
Okay.
Good catch. Does anybody else have any questions before we open the public comment portion?
Stephon, can you repeat what you just said about the three family?
The by right.
Do you allow us comment?
Oh, no, with, I think, because I believe the question was asked whether we were looking for any other variances or relief, and the structure itself, if it were to remain a single-family, for the addition that's being put on would require no variances or relief. We could pull a building permit for that.
Well, just for the addition for the house.
In other words, if you treated this all as one giant, single-family home, technically they could build it by right.
I mean, you wouldn't build this big of a single-family-
Right.
It'd be pretty bonkers.
So let's be real about that for one second. I can guarantee you someone has built a house much bigger than this, but, yeah, anyway. Not this close to downtown. Come on.
All right, any other questions or comments, Lisa, Flora?
I think I kind of want to hear from, I know we've gotten a lot of letters and we've gotten a petition. I think I'd kind of like to hear from the Butters prior to any further questions I might have.
Well, I just want to make sure I'm not cutting anybody off.
Can I just interject for one second? I just want to be clear, because the driveway on-
I have no problem coming here.
Yeah, I have to help, thank you.
So point it out to me if I'm missing it. So we have this driveway for Unit 1, Unit 2, and Unit 3. I see that this is where this driveway is, and this is where this driveway is supposed to be, from the other-
Yeah, no, I just, this was, I think this was existing condition, and was it shown at this point?
So the proposed architectural plan has the garages, obviously, on it. I know it's not on-
There's some-
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so before we move on to opening up the public comment, to, yeah, to the public side, I just want to put in for the record, so we received a petition from a number of Butters. I won't list all their names, but it is quite a few opposing the project. I have a letter from Gail Acarian opposing the project. I have a letter from Ed Kiesling opposing the project, and I have a letter from John Nissenbaum, and I apologize in advance for anyone's names that I have butchered. I hopefully have gotten those mostly correct.
23 signatures.
23 signatures, thank you, Ms. Jacobs, on the petition objective. All right, so I will now open it up, and folks are welcome to come up to the podium, please. As you do so, I really, really want to encourage folks to keep it brief as possible, under five minutes if you can, and as people come up, you know, try not to repeat the same points, come up with, you know, bring in new things as much as you can. This is just to have respect for everybody here's time and to make sure that we get through people in a timely manner.
I just wanted to say to the board that-
Can you please, can you please come to the microphone and give your name and your address, please?
I'm Joanne Cavallaro.
Hi there.
And my address is 12 Milton Street, and I'm an Butter to the 45 Third Street project. What I wanted to say, just in your response to keeping things to five minutes, we've, a lot of these people have collectively worked together with me, so I would say that I do have something to say that's longer than five minutes, but a lot of these people had asked me to speak for them.
Okay.
So what we tried to do is we tried not to talk about the same thing-
Great.
-over and over again. However, there are a couple of other people that are talking about different things than I'm talking about. So just as long as you realize that. And as you can imagine, the neighborhood is very passionate about this project, and we had about six days to figure out what we were going to do. And we went down to the building department, and we looked at these plans that were impossible to see, the dimensions, we needed magnifying lashes, glasses. We couldn't take copies. We had to take copies with our phones because we had gone down before the 48-hour release. So it was difficult to react and hard to react, so maybe all of our thoughts aren't put together as well as succinctly as they could have been. Okay, but I would rather sit there. I would rather sit there. Can I sit down? Or here? Oh, you won't hear me. Okay, I'm good.
How about, how about-
I can do it.
Yeah, you can sit on this chair here, and just, we can ring the microphone over to-
I'm good, I'm good. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I don't have to say good evening again. My neighbors and I oppose the conversion of 45 Third Street to a multifamily of three units. We respectfully request that the board deny the special permit applied for by the developer. When applying the bylaws, boundaries, use, consistency, character, the neighborhood, density, traffic, I know you know all this, et cetera, need to be established and understood. And if these are unknown, it cannot be determined if this project that's going, that is presented to you is in harmony with any of these requirements. The developer submitted his application for the proposed project as meeting the requirements in the off-war district bylaws. We are here to say that this project does not fit and is not in harmony with the criteria listed in the bylaws, for which the developer is seeking relief. Do you have the Smith &amp; Vaughn plan of the map of multi-units? That is one, but this is another one. I have three there, four.
Yes, this one here?
The yellow one.
Yes.
Five, if anyone doesn't have it. Okay. Taking a quick look at the Exhibit B map that was provided with the application, the map is intended to identify multi-residential property in a radius around 45 Third. The map does show predominantly multi-residential use behind Third Street and on Main Street, but what you can't see is the highlighted properties on Third and headed down towards the library are two families, not multi-residential. And the map also tells us that from Third Street towards the Stevens Memorial Library, there are fewer two families in predominantly single-family homes. Here's what you can't see in those numbers. The two families on Third were built as single families for, except for 1113, which was actually built in the late 1800s as a double house by a man named George Smith. It was the only two-family, presumably until the 70s, so what happened? Most special permits for two families on Third were approved prior to 1987. These projects did not impact properties. It didn't impact the streetscape, it didn't impact the density, they didn't impact the character of Third Street, and that is the reason why they were approved.
When you say they didn't impact the density, what do you mean?
What I mean is that, at that time, they didn't really increase, well, they didn't increase curb cuts. There were not a lot of, there weren't a lot more cars at that time. We had Conti Funeral Home, which had fewer cars at that time coming through the area. We had fewer buses. Things just became, they were just quieter. Is that the wrong word?
I just think before, there were only single-family houses or no houses, and after there were two or three-family houses by definition, that's increasing the density. So I think he was just trying to clarify what you meant.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand what you mean when you use that word.
I'm using the wrong word.
Well, if it means something for clarity, it's fine. It's just as long as we understand that we're speaking the same language, so.
Okay, yes, I'm trying to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I was just asking for clarification, I apologize, I don't mean-
So what happened, you know, most special permits for two families on Third were approved prior to 1987. These projects did not impact the properties, they didn't impact the streetscapes, nor the character, they left out density, of Third Street, and that is the reason why they were approved. Here are a few examples. And this is just a couple of examples. I could go back and I could talk about all of them. I probably can't do that right now. But one two-family built as an in-law, and it's in use by the owner, the special permit was approved in the 80s. There were no exterior changes made to that building when that became a one, went from a one-family to a two-family. A special permit was approved in 1970 for a small apartment in an owner-occupied home at that time where only one to two people were allowed to lease the unit, per the landlord. It was owner-occupied, there were no exterior changes made to that property. The 1113 double house was granted a special permit in the 80s with the condition, there was a condition of no exterior modifications. This property is owner-occupied. A single house that has gone back and forth from a one-family to a two-family to a one-family is owner-on-site, it is a Conti property, no exterior alterations. And then a last look at that Exhibit B map, Third Street is primarily single-family homes, and Third Street headed towards the library is still also primarily single-family homes. But then there's the neighborhood, and you can't just look at that map or the Butters, the list of Butters, to understand the character of our neighborhood. And I'm going to use an example. In 2012, plans for a project at 41 Second Street were submitted to the building department for a single-structure conversion to a three-unit, was a multi-condo, all attached units. The application was denied by the building department because 41 Second Street is in the R4 district, and that project without a variance could not move forward. Per procedure, that denial went to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and per procedure and by law, a Butters went out to, I'm sorry, a Butter notices went out to a Butters on two different dates notifying them of the time, date, and location of the proposed project. On the date of the appeals meeting, no one showed up to object to the project, and the board approved the project, which was completed in 2015. That area behind Third Street, it's not our neighborhood. The area behind, I'm sorry, is not our neighborhood. The area behind Third is primarily made up of leased properties with absentee landlords. In stark contrast, the Third Street neighborhood is in attendance tonight here. They did show up, represented by Third, Richardson, Milton, Middlesex, Pilgrim, there are people all over the library area that are here tonight. This is the character of our neighborhood, and our neighborhood is in the library area. Third Street and streets that intersect towards the library from Third are all considered by North Andover residents to be the library area. I'm on Milton, I'm the first house that intersects with Third, about 125 feet from 45 Third Street. When I purchased my home 39 years ago, the real estate listing described the house as being in the library area. Most of us who purchased homes on Third, Richardson, Milton, Middlesex, all the way down to the library area, their listing said that they were in the library area. When I say I'm not on Milton, I'm on Milton- When I say I'm not on Mil- I'm on Milton, the answer is, oh, you're in the library area. When 45 Third Street was listed in 2024, it too was described as being in the library area, in plain view, right at the top of every potential buyer, excuse me, including the developer. Actually, I do have some, not all, but I just, I just have these. And it also describes that Victorian a little bit as well.
Okay, I, I, I think we need to start moving towards the end of this.
Okay.
So other people have a chance to speak. If, if other folks want to come up and continue some of this material, they are welcome to, but I do think that we need to.
Okay.
Give people a chance.
I'm not clear if we're even allowed to consider something that wasn't submitted before. Can we get a point of order on that?
From an abutter, you can.
Yeah.
Mr. Vaughn, Attorney Vaughn, you were provided a copy, right?
Yes.
All right, so, but if we can wrap it up relatively soon, that would be helpful.
Okay. I'll try, but.
I know, I know it's hard.
I have to read faster.
And you're also welcome, you know, this will almost certainly be continued, and if there's anything further that you would like to submit to the board, you're welcome to do so in writing, too.
Okay.
And also come back next time.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If we all abutters.
Oh, yeah, you, you, you.
I'm Michael Vaughn, 129 Goles Street.
Yeah, you will have to come up after this person is done.
Well, here's, I just want to.
No, you, you really can't. We've really got to.
So you have to listen to the.
Come up and ask a question, right?
Yep. So, will someone come up and read the rest?
Okay. Oh. All right. So, okay.
I need the backing.
I don't actually remember where I was.
I'm sorry.
This is why I write, 'cause.
You were doing the description, okay?
Okay.
You, you just handed out a description of what's special.
Okay. The letter submitted with the developer's application states, "It is noted that many of the surrounding homes to the subject property on High Street and neighboring roadways are two-family or larger multifamily homes. Many surrounding homes," it goes on, "are larger multifamily homes, and the proposed new structure will not result in a derogation of the neighborhood." Well, that's not Third Street, that is High Street, and that statement, it's true for High, but it is not true for Third Street, and that was submitted with the application. And I just, I wanted to get that out there because everybody's reading that letter. So we have our own characteristics. Special permitting. We did have one special permit in 2015 for 33, 35 Third Street. Was, an owner left after 1970s having a two-family. A landlord came in, bought that property, and wanted to make a four-family out of it. Went to the board, I went to the building department. It was denied. It went to the zoning board of appeals. It came in as a four. It was a four-unit. The chairman, along with the abutters, the abutters worked for quite a while on this and advised the landlord to please go back and resubmit his plans for a three-family. We had another meeting, and it was denied. And he was not even made, able to make a curb cut on that property. And I'm not gonna list all the reasons why, but they're all in the bylaws. Sadly, that same house is the eyesore of the street. While Third and the surrounding neighborhood, we don't like the way that property looks at all, at all. I'm sure the Conti family, having that property right next to them, hurts their business some, or they probably feel that it does. We really do appreciate that that family, that that property is not a three-family or a four-family today.
All right, can we allow some other folks to speak?
Does, is there somebody that wanted to speak? I didn't, I told you that they had, we kinda collectively put our heads together. There's just a couple of others, and they're not very long.
Karen?
No.
You want me to? No, no, it's Joe's turn. Oh. Did you want me to finish?
I'm not gonna read Joe's.
Okay.
If there is time, you should come back up and finish.
Will I be able to speak again?
I mean, it's gonna, this is gonna go late.
Yeah.
And so I, I, I would like to.
Well, I feel like, you know, how long did all these plans take and everything? I mean, I feel like the abutters should have a chance.
We can't control, you know, the rules on when things have to get sent out and the requirements.
I do understand that.
That's something that's outside of our control.
Right.
So if the applicant mailed, provided the application by the deadline and things got mailed out on time, it's completely outside of the board's decision. I understand it can make it tight for abutters.
Right.
But not within our control.
So, as your abutters.
I can't, sir.
You, sir, sir, but you really can't speak right now.
All right, are the abutters allowed to ask questions? Like, how much, how much of what I'm saying is important to you?
All of it.
Okay.
All of it. And we're trying to leave space for everyone.
Okay.
And be respectful to everyone's time.
Right. But even though I'm telling you that they worked with me to put this together.
I, I understand that, but we need to hear from.
Others have indicated that they want to talk to you.
All right.
If, if, if at the end of this, there's only like one or two other people that wanna speak, then we can bring you back up here. But if lots of other people are gonna speak and we're here until 10:30, then I can't promise you that you can come back up.
All right. Can I keep going for a little bit?
I think we're gonna stop right now.
Wow. Okay.
All right, if you want.
Are you gonna time me? Okay.
I'll time it.
I'm so stressed out, honestly. These homes are stately Victorians that have unique architecture. They're important to the town's history. Okay? Their, their architecture is so unique that it was written in the book, many of you probably know it, "A Good Inland Town." Many of them have. Not just one, not just two, many of them. And there are a lot of, a lot that aren't, and they're just because they're, they're different homes and, I'm losing my train of thought here, but here's something important. Although they were built 175 years ago, all of these homes look just as they did when they built, were built in the late 1800s and early 1900s. And all the property around these homes has remained intact, well, for over 100 years now, with no exterior modifications that can be seen from the street. And I bet you couldn't find one from the back. Wow. I mean, that's, I think that's pretty remarkable, and it would be wiser to not throw away an area of historic homes due to their distinctive features of architectural, cultural, and history of the town. An area such as Third Street, it promotes the town. That's what we're looking for in the plan. Third Street makes the town a more attractive and desirable place to live and work. It's a favorite street. You're done?
Thank you so much.
All right.
My name is Joe Cavallaro, and I am an abutter.
Can you tell us your address, please?
12 Milton Street.
Thank you, sir.
My wife and I bought 12 Milton Street in the library area 39 years ago, and I would like to briefly talk about the five properties that intersect Maple, Third, and Milton Street. Five properties with six units today. 33, 30, I'm sorry, 33, 35 Third Street. If this housing project at 45 Third Street is allowed to move forward, that opens the door for 33, 35 Third Street to revisit his housing project. With an approval of 45 Third Street, there is no doubt that 33, 35 Third will become a four-family. How could you deny it? This would add two units to that intersection. 12 Milton Street. The property is a large Victorian that sits on approximately a half-acre lot. This lot is broken up into three parcels. My wife and I will eventually downsize. When we do sell the house, the ad will not read "Beautiful, maintained Victorian in the established library area." The ad will read "Large, buildable lot with building potential for development." I want to make this board aware that this project has gone out big in the news in the real estate market. In the last three weeks, we have received multiple letters from listing agents asking if we are planning on selling as they have buyers. I am sure my neighbors with large lots as well have been getting these letters. But for tonight, let's just say my property would get approved for four units. This adds three additional units, so now we're up, we're up to five units on this corner. 54 Third Street. 54 Third Street is a very large Victorian, the largest on the corner, that sits on an acre lot. Let's just say they get approved for four units. That adds three more units to this corner, so now we're up to eight units. 45 Third Street. We know they are proposing two units, so now we're up to 10 units at this intersection. 40 Third Street. The youngest owner on this corner. Their daughter is attending North Andover High School, and after the traffic light gets installed in front of their house, I can only assume they will sell. With the curb cut on Milton Street, they could partially get approved for two additional units, so now we're up to 12 units. We started with five buildings and six units. Now we have five unit, five buildings with 18 units, maybe more. But, but adding 12 to this busy corner, it's not a good thing. Let's talk about 45 Third Street. Mr. Grassel is not a neighbor. He is a developer. Karen Mulcahy, John Lyons, Jason Davis, Helen Morikanyan, John Nissenbaum are neighbors. I can tell you their names, of all my neighbors. The developer of 45 Third Street demolished an existing pool on this property approximately a month ago, maybe longer. It's still pile up, it's still piled up in the ad. How disrespectful. I request the board on their way home tonight, drive by it and take a look at it. It's an eyesore, just like 33, 35 Third Street. The attorney for the developer has stated this is one of the lots remaining large lots. That is incorrect. 65 Third Street, 36 Richard Street, Richardson, 43, 53, 99, 114, 122, Middlesex, 99 Green Street, to mention a few, all have large lots, similar to his property, if not larger. This is not a resident seeking a special permit for a garage or an addition on an existing, an existing structure. This is a developer seeking for a special permit to develop a housing project that will continue down Middlesex, Milton, Richardson, Green Street throughout the library area. This is a request to triple the footprint of the existing house that sits on that property today. Not to mention that the city will lose a beautiful, existing, mature maple that's in front of the property for one of the driveways, one of the 10 driveways, and not to mention that their neighbor will also lose their beautiful, mature trees that run down the property line as the roots get cut and the trees get cut back. Joanne covered the neighborhood, the library, the streetscape. All has been intact for 175 years. If the bylaws are ignored, this would be the first, a tipping point. Joanne said catalyst. The existing lots, which there are many, Third, Milton, Richardson, Middlesex, Green, are fair game for the future for development in the library area, which are primarily single-family homes today. If you grant this, how do you say no in the future? They will all seek variances for their project and refer to this one. An approval of this project will end the library area. This project is not in harmony with the neighborhood. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, sir.
[applause]
Oh, arm wrestle.
Mind if I go? Yeah.
Sorry. I'm sorry. He was waving.
I was also.
Okay.
Yes, I was. Are you serious?
Sir, sir, sir. Hey, hey. The gentleman on the left came up.
I was here first. I, I came first. I was here at seven.
Why you mean enter the room?
We're not having fights getting up to the microphone.
Yeah, I, I promise you, you will both get to speak.
Okay. That sounds good.
All right, can you?
Thank you. Oh, okay. Full fight.
Sir, can you identify yourself?
I'm John Lyons at 65 Third Street in North Andover. My purpose is to oppose the granting of variance proposed five-unit, I guess it's three-unit, housing development at 45 Third Street, North Andover. To understand what I'm gonna say, where I'm coming from, what's my point of view, it's important to understand my background. I have five children. We bought the house 47 years ago. Prior to that, I lived at 58 Great Pond Road, up at the lake, from 1945 to 1970. I'm 80 years old. I'm a vet. And also, I went to St. Michael's School, North Andover High School, 53, Merrimack College, 67, UConn, 69. I'm fourth generation. Okay, my grandmother was born in 1882 in the family farm, born on the family farm on the North Andover Common. In 1948, she and her sisters dided the land, the home, and the barns in North Andover. She died in 1989. My town service has six years on the North Andover School Committee, 13 years on the North Andover School Building Committee. I'm proud to say my name is on three school buildings. I spent two years on North Andover Finance. My father was North Andover Town Clerk for 30-plus years. I'm equally proud to say they named the road after him, Lyons Way. My Uncle Charles Trombley also served 20 years on the North Andover School Committee. In tribute, there's a lot of townsfolk here tonight who have related backgrounds, comparable contribution, and much more, share their opposition to this project. Mine, that's my wife and I, we looked two years for a neighborhood with Victorian homes before buying on Third Street. Having lived in solitary on the lake and outer edge of town from 1945 to 70, I'd had it with country living. Third Street was spot on. Six well-kept, unqualified Victorians all in a row. I was built in 1871. 45 Third Street was also built in the 19th century. Karen, wanna show some of the pictures there of the houses?
Yes.
This is Karen.
Karen Mulcahy. Karen bought the house 65 years ago.
So I'm afraid you can't identify, you will need to do that at the microphone for the record.
I can, I can. Why don't you pass it on?
Karen was Miss Rheingold in North Andover in 1977. Our kids can walk the school, church, library, downtown, friends' homes. The locale was bountiful with trees, including a cluster of chestnuts shading the road from McLeone's Mansion to 33 Third Street. Gardens and neighborhoods had large lots and open space. What was even better was the acknowledgement that Third was the northern border of the prestigious library area. Unfortunately, this, this beautiful embodiment of the above representation is being threatened again. But neighborhood strength of mind and the town strength of character will hold the line against further incursion into this library area. About 10 years ago, the, the abutters to 45 Third Street convinced the zoning board not to grant a variance to an absentee landlord, three quarters, three quarters, I'm sorry, three or four entrepreneurs. By the way, none of them ever showed up for any of the zoning board meetings. I thank you for showing. To change the zoning of the old Nelson House, that's 33 and 35, from two-family to four-family, coincidentally, the latter is directly across from the street, from the house we're talking about right now. It was defeated after much hard work and for the same reasons to be given tonight. There were too many cars already transgressing Third and Maple. Today, it's much worse. It's a major artery to Middlesex Street, compounded every morning and afternoon by commuters. And St. Michael, Karen, you wanna get those? And St. Michael's parents picking up and dropping off children. And the PM cars are packed on both sides of Third Street, right up to Conti's driveway. In the corner of Maple and Third is even worse. Cars and school buses are parked from the corner to St. Mike's. And Dudley Street is even worse, with cars parked from Maple to Eddie Keasling's on nine Dudley, house, Eddie's house. When Conti, when Conti has moderate size, Karen?
I gave it to him.
Oh, yeah, okay. There's a large spread there, okay? That shows what happened when Conti has a, a good-sized funeral. That's not as large as. The picture you see there was taken a couple of days ago. When it's a large one, it's up to my house. Okay? It's up to my house. The four-way corner of Third and Middlesex has seen many accidents over the past few years. The latter was and has become a major main drag and thoroughfare. In fact, last year, when these roads were being paved during the gas crisis, I asked Curtis Johnson, gas crisis, he was North Andover's gas crisis project manager, if they were gonna put up lights. He told me the last phase of the gas crisis project was to figure out how to regulate the fast-moving stream of traffic at the crossroads. Talk about streetlights, you best be prepared to install one in front of 45 Third. You would now have five entrances. If you, if you approved this, this variance request, you'd have five entrances to that corner. Okay? You'd have the 45's motel, the entrance to Negress. You'd have Third Street North, Third Street South, Maple Street, and Milton Street. And you're now, and you already have the same issue on Dudley Street. The 45's motel again, Dudley North, Dudley South, and the Dudley Street parking lot, parking garage directly across. The intention of zoning is to preserve the character value and life force of its community and to conserve the natural assets of future generations. Our responsibility as neighbors is to reinforce that zoning, which we are, we want to keep it as just for two families. I'm sorry, I got emotional about this. Carry out this conversion, sustain the last vestiges of Victorian homes in the area, and hulk these inroads into the library area. God, the downtown's become this concrete jungle of condos, apartments, nail boutiques, and now this invasive, bittersweet-like advance is infringing on the last bastion of the North Andover community life. Again, 10 years ago, we blocked, do you have these last pictures, Karen?
Yeah.
Again, 10 years ago, we blocked this absent tenant from converting Nelson's, that's 33, 35, Third Street, to a four-unit. Good thing. Can you imagine what four units would have done when you look at it today?
Yeah.
Here's pictures. The place is a dump. Okay? The garage was falling apart. The entire yard is paved over, yet there's still cars on the street. The dozens of trees that were in that yard have all been cut down and pushed to the back of the yard. They're rotting away. The hedges are all down. The house needs painting. When Nelson sold it, okay, they left it with trees all over the entire lot, and they had a fish pond, okay, with bubbling water surrounded by flowers. The whole was on, that house on North Andover's home is the seater. Look at it now. It's a disgrace to the area. Look at it again, and then imagine, is that how 45 Third Street will end up, worse than the non-conforming project being proposed? The 45's demolition startup doesn't exude community confidence. The refuse being scattered for over two weeks, Karen? Want to show them?
Yeah.
Are we getting close to the end?
Yeah, don't worry. I'm getting there, okay? I'll get up. The refuse being scattered for over two weeks. Aside from strain and tension, everything from the various neighbors are now concerned. Does this indicate a lack of concern for safety, security? Is he concerned about appearance? All right, finishing up here. Environmental pollution. Neighbors, young and old, are junk too, and concurrent with the motel are fearful of an overabundance of light pollution, recurrent sound pollution. Each year, the downtown glare grows expansionally unhealthier. New condos, rental properties, the Davidson-Ferber Junction, Osgood Place, the New Arlington condos that'll be put up soon. And this is indirect light. Now they're forced with direct straight light lighting from Motel 45's light scheme. Garage light, path lights, home lights, car lights, come in and go, all happening 24 by 70. And remember, there's no shields on the four corners on their property to redirect glare. While we're on the subject of Davidson-Ferber, the Davidson-Ferber people, I call them the in-laws, not the neighbors, found the secret expedited route to 495. It's called Third Street. The same argument has to be said for sound. The sound emanating from the street is compounded, as explained in the previous paragraphs. Again, there's no sound shield. And what's going to be worse is inside the compounds, horizontal parking, one-lane driveways, 24 center, you have an all passing within 15 feet of her window. Boy, that's fun. Please remember, home and property degradation are just as important on Third Street as it is on 1518 Great Pond Road, AKA it's now called Bonnie Lane. You see, referencing my background, I lived only a home run's distance from where Ryan resides. Nonetheless, if I still lived there and some entrepreneur wanted.
All right, sir, I think we really need to wrap up.
It's two minutes, one day. Wanted to, it's last page. Wanted a various to put up a motel in the lake area, anywhere close at hand, there be hell to pay. I would defend, I'm sure you would too.
Sir, can you keep it focused on the application at hand and not other properties?
I'm talking, the infringement is going to be upon the society, okay?
I understand that.
And I'm leading up to one more thing here, okay? Okay. All right. The last thing I want to say here is take this last statement about, there's a possibility, okay, that Bonnie Lane eventually, someone may want to try to settle some housing right there.
Okay, we really can't talk about other properties. I want to be very clear that we do not use previous ones as precedent.
Sir, you need to listen to the champ.
Sir, this is, I understand, but what I'm trying to say is we don't work as a court of law. We don't work on a system of precedents. And so, we don't, this approval or not approval will not be used to determine the next one, and it is not determined by the previous one. And so, we really can't be discussing.
I understand fully, okay? But I thought you wanted to hear the inputs from the people, and I thought you wanted some advice.
And absolutely, and you have gone for long enough that I think it is time to give someone else a turn. And there was another gentleman right behind you who you had pushed aside to be able to talk, and I want to make sure he has a chance to speak as well.
Just one more, one more example, okay? In the 1970s, the town suffered the loss of a deeply related, long-lasting variance battle restricting developers from building houses to close the lake shoreline. The zoning set the border a good distance back from the shore and deep into the watershed. The outcome was horrific, Giada epidemic, an expensive water treatment.
Can you, Galory, please be quiet? I'm trying to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, a Giada epidemic, water treatment plant, and a forfeiture of personal public worth. No longer could the state, no longer could we claim North Andover's having the best drinking water in the state. As a result of that, too, the town is starting to purchase land to save it, you know, as national greenland. Summary. Again, we're facing another zoning battle bordering the shores of the library area, the town's second greatest asset. Speaking for this assemblage of neighbors and fellow citizens they represent, we ask you, the board, again, to help preserve this current well-thought-out zoning and push back this entrepreneurial sprawl. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I get the sense that I'm going to be a...
So can you identify yourself in your address?
Oh, yeah, sure. My name's Eric Swersky. I live on Herrick Road, a couple houses down from where this is going to happen. I get the sense I'm not going to be on the same side as a number of the people here.
Wait, are you in a butter?
Uh, no. No, I'm not opposed to it. I'm not, am I?
No, no, a butter means somebody who lives right nearby.
Oh, yeah.
You were provided a notice?
Someone dropped something on my house.
I'm sorry, you said Eric Street?
Herrick Road.
Oh, Herrick.
Yeah. I'm on the corner of Herrick and Edmunds.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Yeah, all right.
He's not in a butter.
Am I not in a butter?
You're not, you're not on the list. No, so you're not in a butter. So I would say.
You can still speak.
He would. I would just ask him to wait until the actual butters get to talk.
All right. But we will make time for you, sir.
That's all right.
Hi, my name is Amy Almarico-Leclair. I live at 25 Dudley Street. I am in a butter. I would be able to see the, or I can currently see the property from my front door. We purchased our property in December of 2020. It is a pink Victorian, if you've ever been on the street. And when my wife and I bought that home, we came before this board to request a variance for the in-law suite that the previous owner, Gail Apkarian, who still lives next door, had created for her mother and where my father now lives. So I came before the board then. And part of the reason I, you know, learned about the zoning and the bylaws is we were allowed to have that because it met the rules of who can live in an in-law apartment, but also because it approved the historic, it maintained the character of the house, why that dwelling, which is larger and not contiguous like a normal in-law apartment is, why that was approved. I believe we should create more housing in our town. I believe we have a housing crisis. I do not believe jamming units into a lot like this in a very densely populated residential area is the answer. I have three small children. Dudley Street is a small street. We chose this house, this neighborhood, this community, and this would fundamentally alter the carrier, the character of it. We already have a problem with the number of cars on Dudley Street, an additional curb cut, and up to 10 parking spaces for 10 more potential, 10 cars. That is a huge influx to the area. And so, I just want to say that as in a butter, I am not in favor of this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm in a butter. My name's Helen Morricanian, 54 Third Street. My family moved to the historic Oscar Gottfried House immediately after the Gottfried, shortly after the Japanese attacked Pearl Harbor on December 7, 1941, and America entered World War II. My family has lived here for generations, right across the street from 45 Third. I respectfully urge this board to deny the variance for the following reasons. Two words I'd like to leave with you tonight. Crossroads and honor and remember. Crossroads. 45 Third Street sits at a crossroads, literally and figuratively. Crossroads are where decisions have to be made. Literally, on the map, this house sits at the intersection of Third and Maple in the historic library district. Symbolically, it's a signal to press pause, stop, look, ask, then start working, walking. One of the things I want to point out is you have to look carefully at the situation from all angles and ask yourself two key questions. Where do I stand? But more importantly, in what direction am I heading? And you need to ask counsel from wise and experienced people, because in the multitude of counselors, there's wisdom. Crossroads. Tonight, all of us are at a crossroads. On short notice, a developer, Ryan Grasso, is requesting a special permit of variance to turn 45 Third Street into what? A neighborhood of historic homes built in the 1800s and 1900s, and you want it to turn into potentially a commercial zone? We have a choice to make. Do we honor and remember our historic roots? Or do we tear down and destroy forever the legacy that's been handed down to us? Long ago, I read of a man who sold his soul for 30 pieces of silver, and he lived to deeply regret it. If he ever did any good in his life, no one ever remembers it. As that famous quote goes, "The evil that men do live after them; the good is often buried with their bones." Like my neighbors, we have all preserved and protected the heritage handed down to us from North Andover's historic families. When my own family, the Morricanian family, purchased the Gottfried House that was built in 1905, we were the second family to move in. We have preserved this historic character of the house and this property ever since, loved this property and house that was built by Oscar Gottfried as a wedding present for his bride. He brought in skilled craftsmen from Europe to do all the detail work. We, as a town, must stand united to preserve and protect our town's historical heritage. If we don't, who will? Honor and remember. Let us honor and remember the noble men and women who went before us. Honor and remember. Let us honor and remember our historical roots. Honor and remember. Let us honor and remember the foundation these men and women laid for us. If the foundations be destroyed, what will law-abiding people do? Will future generations look upon us as being unselfish, seeking to preserve what is good and noble even as they did? Or they will look upon us as interested only in money? How do you want to be remembered? The following two quotations capture the heart of what I'm sharing with you tonight. "A good name is more desirable than riches, far more precious than gold." And "He who loves money will never be satisfied." Mr. Grasso, how do you want to be remembered? For preserving the beauty and historic character of North Andover or for seeking your own financial gain? I trust this zoning board of appeals wants to preserve the historic character of our town. Let us leave a legacy of beauty and honor for the generations to come. Let us pass the torch on to the next generation. I respectfully request that the zoning board of appeals deny this variance on 45 Third Street. Thank you.
All right, are there any other butters who wish to come up and speak?
Ed Kiesling, nine Dudley Street, I'm in a butter. So I have a question for the developer. So on the plan...
So you can ask us, but we will get an answer through you.
It was unclear for me in terms of what was submitted as to whether or not the existing single-family home was going to be converted to two families in addition to the three.
All right, can you help us out with that?
No, we will not.
Into the microphone, please, sir. Sir, into the microphone.
Oh, sorry. It will remain a single unit.
Okay.
Okay. And then the second question is, maybe this is for the board, is, is there a reason or a loophole that we need to understand as a neighborhood as to why all the properties are connected?
So a three-family, by definition, is to be connected. So if they're not connected, they are now single individual units.
And so then it would not be allowable.
So then they would have to be put into different lots.
Unless there were to be an ADU.
Okay. So I guess that, you know, so I'm not for this project, but I think that that is my concern, which is that any lot or any yard that is in that neighborhood at this point, as Joe was mentioning, becomes ripe for development in terms of, I just need to connect it in some way, and I can build as many houses as are possible on that lot.
Well, I think our chair made it pretty abundantly clear that the zoning board does not go based off of precedent. So the zoning board can have two different applications that are essentially requesting the same thing, and the decision can be different for both. There is not a precedent set. So if the board were to vote to approve this, and the neighbor located at the next intersection would try to do the same thing, they might not get it. I think it's just like some of the neighbors had mentioned, people had tried to convert in the past, and they did not get it. Other people have tried to convert in the past and have gotten it. So there is no precedent set. I think the chair made that pretty clear.
It doesn't obligate any future?
No.
Right.
So a decision made tonight does not set the stepping stone for every single large piece of land to have three families connected in this design. This would be specific to this application, which is how it has always been at the zoning board. And I think any chair will tell you that.
Thank you, then. So I respectfully request that the board deny this application on the basis of it as presented.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any more?
Yes.
Yeah, one more, or at least one more. No argument. Oh, is there any more butters that would like to come speak? All right, sir, since...
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I was waiting to see if anyone...
Oh, yes.
Sorry. I'm in a butter. Don't stop. My name's Gail Apkarian. I'm in a butter at 1921 Dudley, built as a fabulous two-family of Philadelphia style. And it's lovely, and I object, and I'm not going to go over. You've got a letter from me, and I don't want to reiterate any other points that have already been made, except to say that I am the former owner of the luscious strawberry yogurt pink house that my neighbors live in, that they bought from us, that is just a really, really fine example of Queen Anne architecture. It's in the book. It's in the in-town, inland book, a good in-town land, you know, book in town. It's just gorgeous. And we bought that house. We were on High Street, and we had a house. We did something unique over there. We built an addition on a million years ago for my mom and my grandma. We were there for 28 years together. And we moved to Dudley Street because High Street was, the traffic was just becoming unmanageable. And so, we developed, we developed 25 Dudley into this just gorgeous, beautiful work of art. We remodeled the carriage house. We kept the integrity of everything, you know, in keeping with the town and the street and the property itself. I mean, it's... yogurt pink house that my neighbors live in, that they bought from us, that is just a really, really fine example of Queen Anne architecture. It's in the book. It's in the in-town, inland book, a good in-town land, you know, book in town. It's, it's just gorgeous. And we bought that house, we were on High Street, and we had a house, we did something unique over there. We built an addition on a million years ago for my mom and my grandma. We were there for 28 years together. And we moved to Dudley Street because High Street was, the traffic was just becoming unmanageable. And so we developed, we developed 25 Dudley into this just gorgeous, beautiful work of art. We remodeled the carriage house. We kept the integrity of everything, you know, in keeping with the town and the street and the property itself. I mean, it's really magnificent. We had so many people praising us, and I'm not trying to toot my horn, I'm just saying, we worked very hard with the town and anyone that came on our property to look at and check this off or, you know, whatever, all the inspectors and all people that were very helpful in making sure that the house was safe for my mom and was going to be in keeping with the integrity of the neighborhood. We worked so hard, and we spent so much money to make that happen. And it really is a gorgeous work of art. It enhanced the street and the neighborhood. Drive by if you don't know it sometime. So as the former owner of that, I can't say what I've done that's beautiful with the two-family. I've just preserved the integrity of the outside. I haven't done any development and don't intend to. But take a look at what we did, and that shows our investment in the neighborhood staying as beautiful as it is without... And I, my son lives upstairs. I referenced in the letter, he has special needs, he lives up there with help. I'm downstairs. And I am concerned with the traffic that exists and more traffic that would exist, especially who knows who coming out of Dudley Street onto there. My son walks around town, and so for that very reason, I'm super concerned about this development. Please deny the request. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, sir, please, you've been, you have been very patient. Thank you, sir. Can you give your name and address once again?
Yeah, my name's Eric Swerzky, 1190 Herrick Road, across streets of Herrick and Edmonds. Eric on Herrick, all right. So as I said, I might, I might not align with some of the people in this room. I'm in favor of this development. I think it's a good location. I think the building is clearly in need of some work, and, you know, they put it up for $8.50, and then you've got repairs and renovations on top of that. That's expensive for a single-family home, especially in this economy. So if they want to turn it into a multifamily unit a block away from downtown where, you know, the businesses need foot traffic, I don't really see an issue with that. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak up as part of public comment?
Can I ask a question?
If you want to come up to the microphone, sir, to ask, unfortunately, just because we are broadcast...
Sir, I would sit back down, sir. I would sit back down because this gentleman was walking up, and you have already had a turn.
But then afterwards, I will, I'll permit you to ask a question. Thank you, sir.
Hey there. Adam Bagney, 92 Colonial Ave. I have no relation to this project whatsoever. I'm just a resident. I have no relation to the abutters. I have no relation to the folks that are applying. What I will tell you is that I'm a commissioner in the North Andover Housing Authority. And I will tell you that these...
Well, hold on.
But I'm not here, I'm not here speaking on their behalf. I'm speaking as a housing advocate. And I will tell you that three units is not going to solve the housing crisis in Massachusetts. But I thought this was a good opportunity to come down here and make a broader point for all of you, and that is that we need this board badly. The Lieutenant Governor was here in town a couple weeks ago, and she was talking about how do we solve this severe, massive statewide housing crisis? And we don't do it by building 1,000-unit giant buildings, because that's just not what's going to happen in Massachusetts. We do it by building 20, by building 30, by building 50, by building 3, by building 12. And so, you know, I'd ask you all to consider that, when you're not just considering this application, but when you consider any application relating to housing that comes before you. We really need it. And one thing that these, you know, folks that are against these projects typically argue, and understandably, right, changes, change is worrisome for a lot of people, especially when it's, when it's close to home. But a lot of the arguments are the same old stereotypical arguments. And those are, it's going to ruin the character of the, of our neighborhood. Our house is going to go down in value, that some, for some reason, the people that move into these units are going to be a danger to our neighborhood. And there really is no statistical evidence whatsoever that any of that is the fact. So I just wanted to point that out. What there is statistical evidence, though, is that we are in a severe, serious statewide housing crisis. We're only talking about three units here, and, and I don't, I don't encourage you to support or, or decline this project. You know, I don't have a position. But what I will tell you is that we really, really need this board to do everything you can to add housing units here in North Andover. I'll tell you, I've lived in town for four years. The value of my house has gone up about $350,000. Great for me, not good for my kids, not good for my grandkids, not good for my neighbors who can't afford it, not good for my, for my parents who want to downsize. So that's, I just ask you to consider that. Appreciate everything that you guys do as a volunteer board. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, wait. Excuse me, sir.
So, sir, hold on. Let me be very clear.
I'm an abutter.
That we don't address each other.
Okay.
That you're welcome to address us.
He doesn't live anywhere near the neighborhood.
Can you identify, give your name and address?
My name is Joe Vanoudy. I live at 19 Milton Street, bought the house in 2003. Who here has been on Maple Street when school's getting out? Yeah, I have pictures of buses and people parked on the wrong side of the road because they don't, they're trying to pick up their kids, and they're creating an unsafe situation there. And so that last talk, yes.
No, please.
You have to see the traffic pattern there when school's getting out and the way people are behaving. And that's not even talking about the speed that's going down Third Street with people rushing down that road. And now we're not even talking about Conti. It is a very congested area already, and it has been for a while, and everybody here is aware of that. So please take that into consideration.
All right, thank you, sir.
I was going to say the same thing.
Okay.
I just wanted to oppose what the, Joe Cavallaro, 12 Milton Street?
Yeah.
I just want to oppose what the person who just made a statement and left was. Unfortunately, he's not here. Nobody in this room referenced anything about the type of people that would occupy these units. Nothing was said about the type of people.
We understand that. We're all listening to all of it.
He's, he's, he said it, this is being recorded, I just want to make that statement. Okay? The other thing is, he didn't reference the rate of unoccupied units at Avalon and the turnover rate at some of these properties. I am a builder. I build large, multi-residential units. My company builds 100% affordable housing. I know of the turnover. I know of the open units. So his statement was not totally accurate. Thank you.
Mr. Lyons, you had a question. I want to make sure that, then you have a chance, because I did promise you.
A question. What's the total square footage floor-wise in the old house?
So questions are directed to the board?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, 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 ask us all of your questions, and then we will get an answer for you from...
I want to know what the total square footage is in the, in the, the, the single house, the current house. Then I want to know what the current square footage is for the additions, the five, the both, whatever, three or four additions are, including the breezeways and including also the garages.
Well, according to the listing that was provided on Exhibit C, if it's the accurate listing from when the house was sold, the square footage is 2,812, and that's from the document that was provided by the woman...
2,812 for...
The original house. The existing house.
The original house.
Okay, now, how about the cumulative square footage for...
Mr. Grasso, can you help us out? Or Mr. Vaughn?
Is there any other additional questions while they work on figuring out the numbers?
Yeah. The gentleman that talked before, I thought it would have been a great idea if they were proposing an accessory dwelling unit. I mean, to me, that's, that's, that's a wonder. I mean, that's what the governor pursued, and, I mean, it's being used for good purposes. It's, it's, it's not a major, a major disruption to the community. You could really build that and put it, that it's in total conformity with the house. I mean, to me, it's not providing thousands of little houses and motels. It's every, every individual may be adding one rule. God, I've got that. I've got an in-law apartment. I provided it for my mother-in-law. I provided it for several young couples who had no other place to go. I think that should be his intention. Now, I'm asking about the square footage because, as I understand the law on these, these individual units, the, the unit you add, the square footage cannot exceed the square footage of the main house.
Under what circumstances, sir?
In the, if you, the rule...
For what?
If you want to add an individual unit.
Are you talking about an accessory dwelling unit?
Yes, yes.
So for an accessory dwelling unit, it has completely different rules, and it would have to be substantially smaller than the house.
Right.
But it would, and it would also be by right and would not be in front of this board at all.
So he could make it look like any design...
I understand, I understand. I, I'm just kind of finding a compromise. I mean, he looks like a nice guy. He looks like he's got some pretty good intentions. Not sure that they're very...
Can we please...
All right, all right, sir, can we...
I don't think they're altruistic, but I'm just saying that might be a nice compromise.
And, and the character.
And the character, yeah.
And the character notations. If there's anything further, I believe Attorney Vaughn is working on those numbers or has gotten them.
Just adding up the total on the plan, 8,285 square feet.
Cut it.
Total with the existing unit or with the two additional?
That was the total of all three units.
All three combined?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's about 6,200 then for the additions.
He asked about breezeways and other things, and I can't say whether or not the architect included those.
Yeah. That's sufficient for us. Thank you. All right.
FYI, they're going to...
I, I understand. Right. I understand that they will have to come back. I just want to make sure, are there any other comments from the, from the public before I open it back up to questions from the board? All right. I think before we have that, do you guys have any responses that you would like to make specific to those comments?
There were lots of comments that I could make. I would say there were certain things that were said about how long people have been in town, and I don't care if you've been in this town for a week or 80 years, I think you're entitled to the same respect and same property rights as anyone else that is a resident of the town. I can say that I know for a fact that my client has the best of intentions. There was a lot of talk about large Victorians, and he was intentionally trying to design something that was, was tasteful. If you look at the actual plans submitted, they, they are very consistent with, with the neighborhood. There was a lot of talk about deny the variance, deny the variance, deny the variance. Obviously, we're looking for a special permit, not a variance. It seems to me as though a lot of people were perhaps really talking about a zoning change as opposed to compliance with zoning, which is exactly what we're doing. You know, I mean, could go on forever. I think what we're probably most interested in, and what I would like the rest of this discussion to evolve into, is how can we make the project better, more appealing? There was no discussion of what someone would rather see. It was just, we don't want you doing anything on your property. And that's not what property rights are about. That's not what the zoning bylaw is about, and that's not what we're here for. So I know Ryan is very interested in, in designing something that is aesthetically pleasing and fits with the neighborhood. One other major issue people were talking about was traffic, traffic, traffic. Conti's St. Michael's School, you know, that's an existing condition that no one's going to change. If you want to talk about traffic, we're talking about two additional units, probably four additional cars making maybe four, six trips a day. It's de minimis. It's going to have no impact. I'm, again, I'm very, very interested in hearing what you think. He's willing to, to take another stab at designing something that is maybe more, more appealing, but...
Yeah, well, and so that's where I, I know that we will...
I'm hoping to tie that on this.
So I know we will need to have a continuance, right? Because of the aforementioned discussion about the driveways. But I would like to give the board an opportunity, if they have any questions that they, or comments they would feel would be necessary for them to take into that continuance, so that we don't have to continue too many more times.
We do need 20 minutes for Alex alone, so maybe she should... I'm not a chair anymore. I don't get 20 minutes. I'm kidding.
But, but I am serious, you know, if you, if folks have questions or things that they want to raise, now is a good time, because if we can fold it into the next meeting, that way we can have the fewest of these possible. I think it would be in the best interest of everyone.
I agree. So I'll throw my, my two cents out first, and it won't be 20 minutes, so you're lucky. I will say this, I, I think whether you're going three units or five units, you're going to increase the cars, right? So I'm not, you're not going to eliminate that aspect if you want to go two or three units. I think one of the biggest problems for me is that I get why you're connecting it. You need to connect it. But let's be real about what this is. This is three single-family homes on one lot. Okay? Now, I think, I don't need the clapping. I don't need the clapping. Thank you. I think if you want to be able to have two or maybe three units, it needs to be something that is fitting in with the character more. And I think fitting in with the character more is like what you've heard. There are very large Victorian, I mean, you drive down headed toward the middle school, and there are huge, gorgeous Victorian homes. I don't know if all of those are single-family or if they're multifamily, to be honest with you. But on the face of it, it looks like a single-family home. So whether that's, you know, adding on to what's there and then maybe doing your third unit in the back, does this eliminate the neighbors in terms of cars and parking and traffic? No, it doesn't. But I sit here and say, find a compromise. And in this, the compromise is, you're getting your three units, maybe not to the fullest extent that you want, and they're getting something that looks more like the character. Because I will be honest, this, as much as you try, and I get it, you're not going to make this look like it fits in with the way it's designed. But a larger, and like I say, the neighbors might not like this, a larger-style Victorian where you have one unit on this side, one on that side, one in the back, and then maybe your, your parking or your garage is coming in from Dudley, I think you might get a little bit more agreeance on that.
So it'd be a larger structure, in other words, creating more mass, right? And we were trying to be respectful of, like, more green space and patios and outdoor space.
And like I say, you might not make everybody happy.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I, I personally don't think, I think this looks like three individual homes shoved on one lot, and I don't think you're going to be able to make it... And again, if you look going toward like the middle school, there are huge homes. And yes, some of them might have larger green space, and you might give up some of that.
No, look, and we're agreeable to a compromise and some ideas of what is more...
I think kind of jumping around different ideas of how you can, if you're really adamant on your three units, how can you make it look like one structure?
Okay. Sure.
That's my two cents, but I'm one person on this board.
Yeah.
That's what I gathered also.
See? Not 20 minutes. Perfect.
Well under 20 minutes. Any, any other folks that want to chime in with thoughts or questions?
So, being new, I had a question about, in the, the reference for the, the permit, the subsection A is achieve compatibility with the rest of the pattern of the uses in the district. And I echo that, as presented, it doesn't seem to fit that, and as presented by the neighborhood, that it is out of character with the neighborhood. So my question was to, more procedurally, how much does that impact the conversation that we have? So I guess we can...
So the answer there is that we have a lot of leeway. So the, the reason that a special permitting process exists is for us to be able to use our subjective judgment. And so that essentially means that we get to set the terms of that discussion? And there are lots of, to Ms. Jacobs' point, there are lots of different ways that you could construct, you know, one, two, or three units in that shape of property. And we can exert some influence in terms of what we want, and it is really, it is a subjective opinion. It is not, there is not a set, a chart of rules that we necessarily have to go by in selecting them. selecting those rules.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
As it stands, I don't believe what has been presented fits what I can support because of the uniqueness of the neighborhood. That in no way is saying that that can't be adjusted, just that as written here, I, I cannot support what has been presented. And due to an, an error, you have that opportunity to, to go back with a continuance which denies you nothing and continues the conversation. So, thank you for the clarification, Chair.
Mr. Testa, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just echo what Alex said about the three separate units, three separate houses. Almost wondering that if you divided the lot in some way, two, two lots keeping the main house and then that parcel that goes from Dudley to main, Dudley the third, similar to the house to the left of it, you know.
I think they don't quite have the square footage for that.
No, I, I agree, but, but to me, that lot, if you were to divide it, that lot is very similar to the lot that's to the left of it and the corner lot would be the, very similar.
The zoning has changed since what their acreage is.
I get that, I'm just saying that it'd be two units, not three units, but, but yeah, so I mean.
But it would look more like.
But in terms of a way to orient the structure, you can think of it in terms of that as well, right?
Right, right, so.
Yeah.
And, and so I, I think all of these are reasonable statements. I think one additional thing that I do want to stress is that when we, as Mr. Bagni said earlier, we do have a housing crisis. And when we think about ways to address that, you know, something that, what gets built most of the time in these communities are large complexes, are, you know, large two-hundred unit, three-hundred unit buildings. And a good chunk of the reason why that happens that way is that towns like ours don't have zoning for anything that's in the middle. They don't have zoning that allows for five units, six units, seven units. And the result is then that if you are going to go to that town and ask to build something, you need to ask for a lot to make it happen. You need to ask for a big, high-density complex. And for understandable reasons, people don't love this because it's a big structure that is obvious, it is usually placed near a busy road and it creates a big structure. And so what everybody says is that what we need is what they call the missing middle. We need smaller units that are able to mix in better with a residential community. And I would encourage folks to think about what it means to have that because it, we all say that as a principle because we say we don't want the big structure, but what it means is that then your community that has single-family homes and duplexes is going to have a triplex or a quad or, or five units. And that, that necessitates some level of change even if, to make it so that it is not that big structure that you really don't want or that many people really don't want. But yeah, so that's, that's my stepping on the soapbox that I get to do as a, as a chair.
Enjoy it. Real quick, Attorney Vaughn, look at Ferber Ave. When I'm talking a bigger structure, I'm not talking Ferber Ave. And if you're not familiar with Ferber Ave, I know you can figure it out, but that is not what I'm talking about.
Do we know?
Jeff, I have to clear.
You can come up to the podium, please.
I didn't want that confusion because then he comes back in with a Ferber Ave and it's my fault.
Continue it again.
Hi, Kathleen Stagno, 14 Edmonds Road. I grew up on Third Street. That is my loud father over there. He's very passionate about, about this project. There is a lot of nostalgia involved, but, and I won't reiterate this, I am concerned it gets down to one lane with Conti's, it's a very busy corner. We're the same age, we have a lot of the same friends, he's a great guy, but that's a monstrosity. But let's work together. I'm a huge proponent of affordable housing. I know there's a housing crisis, but that is ridiculously large. And it's not affordable, thank you, but, question. So facing forty-five Third, the Kirkpatrick's old house, there's a parcel to the left, could that be like a, a, a single-family home? Is there enough space? Setback? So you'd have to subdivide the lot, it has to be connected?
So one of the problems is that if Mr. Grasso wanted to do that, he would have to get approval to divide the lot and then he would have to come back to us without a guarantee because he'd be looking for variances for setbacks because he wouldn't have the setbacks and he wouldn't have the square footage, the acreage that he needs. And he'd be missing a lot of things from when that other house was built.
All right, so, all right, other option, Dudley Street, there's an entrance in the back there, the land goes to the back across from Eddie's house with all the garages. Is there enough space there for, I know you discussed, but is, for like a?
And you know what I say before you keep going?
Yeah.
Just because I think this will help, collaboration with developers and neighborhoods can be phenomenal in not only you guys as a neighborhood being able to keep what you love so much.
Right.
But also making that compromise.
So, which is, which is, I think, I think is important, but when people come up and say, this is nostalgia, you people are ridiculous and walk out, it's just really frustrating.
It doesn't, it took me ten years to get rid of my old car, I get it.
But, okay, so Dudley Street, if we, could he have a, the small rental property there above a garage that he can rent and make money off that? And then make a two-family out of the Kirkpatrick's old house and make stellar? Well, yeah, well, but he could make adjustments to it. You got the house for a steal, it's a big house, it's a beautiful, you can bring the neighborhood back, add, add a two-family, rent out maybe a property in the back, but, and I know what you're thinking, but I'm just trying to tell, show you where we're coming from. It's awfully congested down there. I've been going down that, this road my entire life. It's a huge cut through. St. Mike's, every day, it's so busy. And Conti's, it's small funerals, it's so tight. And that corner is so tough and all the neighbors are considerate and they avoid the street when there's a wake because I, I know every single one of these people, they raised me, they're still raised, and my kids are growing up in, in the neighborhood. So I guess what I'm saying is I don't want to become a bedroom community, I want to be smart about where we put these, these new housing units. I want people who work hard to be able to afford a place to live. But please don't just throw in monstrosities and become a bedroom community, let's keep the integrity of the town.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so I think unless there's any further input from the board, I think we are at.
I'll, I'll chime in since I don't think I have.
Okay.
I think that what Alex said about talking together is important. I think that collaboration is amazing and it sounds like there's an appetite for it all around. A lot of people have a lot of things to share. And the way we prevent our community, no matter how big it gets, no matter how populous or how dense it gets, from not being a community anymore is to keep having this conversation, right? Like we could have the most Boston downtown-esque architecture and still be a community if we still have conversations. So I would really hope that between this and the next meeting, people talk to each other and we have a person that's looking at questions.
You come up to the podium. Yeah, I'm afraid we require it just because everything is on TV and everything is recorded.
My name is Karen Dargan Malkahy. I'm in fifty-seven Third Street, right next to the lot that he wants to build on. Fifty years ago, there was the owner, I'm not sure if it was the Abbott's or it was the Kirkpatrick's, but they had proposed building a small house on that lot on the side. It was voted down. The Abutters didn't want it and it was, that's why that lot is still open and vacant today. And we got a letter from the real estate agent that Ryan is working with. I, I would imagine she wants to sell the units and houses that he's going to build. She sent us a letter stating what he was going to do is five units. And I called her and asked her and said, can we have a meeting with Ryan? The Abutters want to get together with him either in front of the house or, she said, oh yeah, that sounds perfect, either in front of the house or at her real estate agency. Never heard a word, nothing. We wanted to get together with him and, and see what we could come up with. Before he presented this plan, we knew nothing about what his ideas were. And we went down, I don't even know if it was a week ago, to see the drawings and it was like shock. That wasn't what we were thinking. We thought he was going to buy the house, I thought he was going to buy the house for his family. I thought a family man would buy it, fix it up beautiful, do the landscaping and everyone would be happy and enjoy it. That isn't what we're getting. Even if he took the existing site, made it a two-family and beautified the area, we would be happy with that. But we tried to meet with him ahead of time and it didn't happen and he had plenty of time to do that. So let's find out a reasonable plan, what we can agree to, and we'll see what can happen from here. But it's going to congest the neighborhood, whether it's on Dudley, which is just, they don't even pave it or plow it. It's not really a street. Third Street is a dragway coming up from Middlesex. When they go to take that corner, they step on the gas. It's a bad spot and they cut through right to Main Street. But that, that lot was proposed to be built on fifty years ago and they voted it down and said no.
All right, thank you. All right, I think we are at the point of continuance, so.
I, I agree, I would just make one quick comment.
Yeah.
Fifty years ago, zoning was different and it probably didn't have multifamily under this section, I'm pretty certain that, that it didn't. So many of those examples really are, are not applicable. But that said, I think the most important thing she said was about trying to collaborate and Ryan is more than willing to try to do that and we will try to do that before the next meeting and would seek a continuance, continuance for the opportunity to revise the plans and get something different in front of you for consideration.
I would throw in just a little thing because I know this might make a difference. In doing redesigning, I wouldn't be too freaked out if you're needing like, and I'm just speaking for myself, a little bit of a variance in terms of like, you know, a variance of like two feet on a side setback.
She doesn't like double digits, I don't know if you've heard.
No, my point being is that right now you've, they've kept within all of the setbacks and I don't want them to sit here and be, I don't want them to be afraid that if they restructure it to make it so that it looks more, you know, fitting with the neighborhood, they're, you know, only going to be twenty-eight feet and they're going to need to have two feet and then that's going to be an issue. Because I think the board would compromise.
Especially given that this lot is not square.
It's odd.
Right, and so from a, you know, lot shape standpoint, that is a thing that we often consider when looking at variances.
With variances, hardships are involved in consideration, like lot train, lot, lot shape.
I'm trying to make the next meeting very productive.
I appreciate that, I really do.
Thank you.
And so, all right, do we have a motion to continue?
That's what you guys wanted, right?
Yes.
Okay, don't forget about the driveways.
And a motion to continue.
Words escape me, don't have children, stipulation of continuance?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Presumably they're keeping track of the things to do and.
We, we get to still vote it up or down later, so we, we can decide if it's a.
Okay, I just, I was in charge of that had to be documented.
No.
I will make a motion to continue the petition.
All in favor?
Don't I have to say until the meeting, what's the, when's the next meeting?
May twentieth.
Until the May twentieth meeting.
And I'll do a roll call on this one. Mr. Testa?
Aye.
Mr. Ja, Ms. Jacobs?
Mister. Aye.
Second fight in the room.
Aye.
Ms. Grant Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Rutherford?
Aye.
And I am an aye. All right, we will continue to the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, we, we are not done yet, so.
Oh, who's going to leave? I'm sorry.
We got, we got one more item, just really quickly. Folks, if you can keep it down just a little bit, I apologize, but we need to be able to continue with this meeting. All right, this is just an additional note that there's a forty-B correspondence from CHI dated twenty, January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, recording Orchard Village. That is in the documentation for the meeting, we don't need to read it here.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, don't we have to just say, recognize that we didn't, just read that it exists?
He did it, he did it, it exists, we don't take any action.
Yeah, that's all.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
I'm going to give it to Frank, just because you've got to do something today. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Alright, we are adjourned.